Good evening, everyone who's here even hiding behind the pillars. Thank you for being with us tonight. It is Monday, August 6, 2018, and time is 7:03 PM. And we will call this regular meeting of the City Council to order with a roll call.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Hires?
Here.
Commissioner Bliss?
Here.
We'll have the floor.
Next up, we will have our invocation led by Pastor John Rozell from Tragedy Nation ACW. John, good to see you. Thank you Pastor Rozell.
It's just John. All right. Would you pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for the opportunity to be about your business in our great city tonight. Thank you that we live here in the greatest place on earth, Father. We just ask for calm tonight and peace over this place, as the just common sense to prevail. And Father, I just, I just come to you tonight as this time of year. Father, I'm just lifting up our, our schools up to you as in this next month, we got schools going, students going back to school, Father. I'm a big thank you, Jesus, from all the parents, but I know a collective sigh from the teachers and administrators, but Father, just praying of peace and a calm over our schools and the buses and everything that that entails, Father, but a, but a protection as parents, a time that we never thought that we would have to endure, but in the back of our minds where we wonder if they will be safe when we drop them off, Father, but just praying for Chief King and, and all those who would protect our students and, and again, the faculty, the staff there. Father, just pray that your Holy Spirit would have his way over our schools, over our teachers, over the students, over the staff. I, I just thank you, Father. Please be with our first responders, just be with everybody, and again, just thank you for the opportunity to be about your business. We thank you above all else for your son, Jesus Christ, for his death, burial, and resurrection and the hope that we have in him. We love you and praise you in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you. Now, if you've joined, I pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John, for the invocation. Appreciate it very much. We'll move on to item number two, which is our public comments section. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. The cumulative total of all comments from the public shall allow to exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to local citizens. In compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the City Council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during this comment period. Is there anyone who'd like to make any comments at this time? Uzo?
Yes, I'm John Uzo. I noticed that, that our city treasurer is still in absence, and so my, my request to the City Council will be to take the appropriate action, whatever's needed, to the city attorney to encourage him, based on the office he chose, to accept, to attend the meeting, surprise, and provide the appropriate financial counsel to the council members and the mayor. In addition, the investments that he has are margin what best, and I don't believe in my correct professional opinion, he's getting appropriate advice in terms of what the investments, their financial investments, not considering economics whatsoever, in, in the context of what a financial planner would actually think about, as opposed to whatever the rates are now, without the expectation of the future change of our environment, especially with a new president and the way the world is changing right now in terms of interest rates and the demand. So what I'd like to do is just y'all encourage him to attend to the best of your ability to actually provide you all with some financial benefits. That's all.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments at this time? Seeing no other hands going up or anyone stepping forward, we'll move on to item three, which is our consent agenda. Council of these items, as usual, are placed in the consent agenda so they can be approved by unanimous consent, or you can pull any of the items out that you wish to be considered individually before that vote is taken and it will be handled separately. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull the financial reports and the budget amendment.
We have a request from Commissioner Bliss to pull the financial reports and a budget amendment.
And some of this.
And a movement, or a, excuse me, a move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Long. Clerk, once you've got the names made of what ones we pulled, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Bliss?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We'll come back to those items momentarily after we hear from some people who give us a, some announcements, presentations, and reports, that's what I know English. A couple of employees that we would like to recognize for longevity and service to the City of Tlakow, and I don't see her in the crowd, Pamela Bell, she's been an officer with us for 10 years here with the Tlakow Police Department. And Chief King, is there anything that you want to say at this time, or is it just a recognition of her 10 years?
I think recognition is sufficient without her presence.
Without her presence. And we've got Larry Blackman, who's also been here with us for, for 10 years. In fact, I remember strangely enough, taking the, the votes to hire them when I was still on the City Council a decade ago. So congratulations to them and thank you to them for their decade of service. Now, we have a report from the library, which is written. We also have a report, at least on the agenda, from the Tlakow Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have someone here tonight to give us that report. Sometimes they're not here. Tonight's one of those nights. It appears that neither the Chamber or Main Street is in the audience on a quick glance. Probably have a conversation there. And we've got a written report from the Street Department. Chief King, did you have anything from the PD?
I don't think so, no, it's not.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it looks like everything will be on the agenda, I would imagine, for the employees over here to my left. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Chief Adams, anything for you?
Nope, they're good. It's hot out there.
Yes, it is. Let's go back to the items that were removed from the consent. Oh, Commissioner Hires?
I have one question.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Reynolds isn't here, but it might be, it could be Ed, it could be Clint. The sidewalk at South Ridge, have we talked about, anymore about staking that and getting it started? It'll start on Thursday.
Last time I talked to Wayne, he was gonna have that done.
So do we think that it'll be done by?
Well, I'll, I'll call that tomorrow, the Street Department. I'll find out.
Okay. We'll get you a status report.
Any other questions, Karen? Then we'll move to item five, which is discussion of possible action on the items removed from the consent agenda tonight. We had two. Commissioner Bliss had asked for the acknowledgement and receipt of the financial report for June to be removed, along with a budget amendment. We can handle those as two separate votes, but I would imagine that Ms. Curtis, would you want to come up to the podium? I think you and I had talked earlier about possibly pulling the financial statement ourselves because of an explanation that you'll not provide.
I would suggest going ahead and pulling the financial statement for June because of the salary accounts that I was hoping would be passed through the budget amendment, but I understand that there's some additional paperwork that needs to be provided. So I'm okay with both items being pulled if necessary. I know it might put a little bit of a bind on May. Can you wait two more weeks?
Don't have much choice. They have to.
So your suggestion is at least for the financial report, let's deal with that separately, to wait until mid-month to acknowledge receipt of those. Make no action.
Correct.
Commissioner Bliss, you were the one that asked them to be pulled. Is that, we, your, is that your, to your satisfaction?
Are we grouping the two in this conversation?
I did.
She did.
Apologize.
But I was gonna handle them separately, but on the financial report, is that okay?
Yeah, and that, that was my question.
And then the second one is?
Amended before.
Okay, and the second one is part and parcel with it, so there'd be no action on it as well.
Correct.
And you're okay with that all done?
Yeah, I was, needs a clarification that historically, it seems like we've done a reallocation prior to the budget amendment, so there's always been two pieces of paper that went with every budget, the budget amendment and the transfer or reallocation. Sometimes I think those terms are changed. Is, is, is my memory correct on that? That's the way we've historically done it?
I believe so, but I think the only thing, and I'm going to be very careful with what I say here, don't take it as an absolute, I think the only thing that is required is the, the vote on the budget amendment. I think the other is simply internal paperwork, and it's legally speaking, it'd be the budget amendment, it would be what you always would do. But historically, you are correct, we have done both pieces of paper, had them both in front of you. Because I think it provided a good explanation for what would be done.
So can, is that something that's gonna be repeated? Are we just going to do the budget amendment next time?
It's your, it's to your preference, but just changing staff, they did the required thing and, and not the others. What we can do, we can go back to the previous practice of assuming it isn't burnt. I can see that it would be.
I have to do the paperwork anyway, if that's the way you prefer it.
Yeah. I'm just speaking to the way we, it has his, pardon me, have his story.
You're not both doing that tonight.
Yeah. And with Lanning not being here, I'd really err on the side of caution, I guess, if we were to have a chance to confer with him or do it the way that we're used to doing it.
I would suggest that I do a little research and provide you with some paperwork.
Yeah, that's fine, and I'd like to see.
That way we'll both know, or all of us will know for sure.
See the information on that, so we're both on the same page from here forward.
So I'll, I'll do that in between now and next meeting and provide you with the paperwork if necessary. If not, I'll present the same document back to you with different dates.
Okay.
Okay?
Just take no action on both of those, and we'll come back in a few weeks, and we'll confirm how right I was about what I said earlier on the, the reallocation and the amendment thing, so if we have to do both, we'll do both.
Thank you, sir.
Or I guess we'll do it anyway, because that might be the preference.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is discussion of possible action to accept the 2016-2017 audit. Danny, you can remain for just a second, because I wanna, or you can come on out the podium if you'd like. Either one is fine, but we know that Mr. Green is en route here, correct?
Correct.
So what I would ask councilors is if we can suspend the agenda for that item and simply handle it first once Mr. Green arrives. We'll finish sharp business when he shows up and then move right on to item six once he gets here. Does that work? With no objection then, we will move to item number seven, which is discussion of possible action to approve the purchase of any street sweeper. Mr. Carr and Mr. Reynolds, who's not with us, but Mr. Green, you can carry the word here.
Speaking of Wayne, if you'd like to do a lease purchase for a new street sweeper that is on a statewide contract, it was budgeted for.
I have a problem with the, with the street sweeper. I think we need to use that money to actually pave some streets and get some stuff done around here.
I think the money for the streets that we're talking about paving is there.
I don't have any ideas on that.
The money is there to pave those streets. The street sweeper, though it's only, I mean, it's not that old, but it is pretty disrepair.
Here's, here's what I would say, is the, the money is there for the streets we've been talking about, but if the question is we want to do more streets rather than street sweeper, then we would probably need to start looking into the funding that was allocated for the streets.
That's what I'd rather do. I mean, that's my position on it.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm here. You may. The street sweeper is a requirement we agreed to at Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality to provide the best management practice for our stormwater program, so we've committed to operating a street sweeper in our community.
What's a time frame?
It's a five-year permitting period, and we just did it.
So we got five years to purchase it?
Yeah, I mean, we're supposed to be doing it every day.
Is, the one, the one we have now is operable, correct?
It's operable. It's operable, but not effective.
No.
Would it cause us to?
They prepared it more times than I can count. Sometimes it causes the stormwater issues because it has a hydraulic line break.
It's eight years old.
All the, all the work it did to sweep the streets goes away because it dumps hydrology everywhere.
And it's only eight years old.
It has been a longstanding problem that we have, in fact, been over three years.
And even if we were, United States, we'd have it.
Having the equipment that is capital, and it seems like that's the last 20 years, last 10 at best, and that's. It does rack up a lot of miles, because it's only one for a city of this size to have one street sweeper.
Yeah, it runs every day when it's working.
So?
Where does it run?
I've only seen it maybe twice.
It runs in the middle of the night.
Commissioner Bliss, where you want to?
Yeah, I just had a question about the number, so the 187, that's the total price for the sweeper. So the, the money we have in capital improvement, will that be used to pay that down? What are we gonna do for the, the cash that we've got in that account for the street sweeper?
That'd be used to make the payments on those purchases, if I remember correctly. I believe that's how we set it up.
Exactly, for that purchase. Okay. So we're financing the entire amount, yeah?
So when I read it, I think that's the way Wayne intimated at budget times.
So the cash that's in that account, do we have the money to do three years? Do we have the money to do four years?
Do we have any, some of those?
Well, it's a state contract.
Well, what is it?
What do you?
What's the term?
Well, they, they did it out for three years, 36 months, and they did it out for 48 months.
The, it was predicated, I believe, and this is from them, the council, but I believe it was predicated on a three-year term.
If we can do it for three years. He, he does have a breakdown here. 2016. Right. We, we budget on, based on a three-year term, I'm almost to the all deposit. If we do it on a three-year term, assuming that we go with Armstrong, who, Chief, who is the lowest bid, and we did it on three years, that annual payment is 66. Is that how much we have? Granted. He, he gave a breakdown, so if you go with Armstrong, like you said, it's a 3.62% 36-month. Right. And payment. Right. And then if you take the payment times 12, it's 66,000. So is that in the account of the, although for this fiscal year, we don't need the full 12 months, we need.
About 10.
One month's gone, two months are gone, three, four months are gone by the time we get it.
Probably so.
So then we'd be committing to two more years, five months.
Do we have to start paying when we take this, when they order it, or can we take possession?
I believe it's when you take possession. Yes, this fund will be dispersed upon delivery and acceptance of the payment.
Got a question. Uh, Mr. Uzo?
Yes.
What does he make of the sweeper? Sorry, say that again?
What is he costing the sweeper?
187,000.
$150,000?
So.
May I make a recommendation?
Please come to the microphone, absolutely.
Uh, yes, again, with the situation that exists with the city treasurer, you will be having on October 16, 240,000 to mature. It's only, only 1.8%. The agreement that he has with Edward Jones has automatically rolled this stuff over, and it's very detrimental to the city and the council for that to happen. So again, if this statement is correct, the amount, we're earning 1.8, whatever the rate is now, I'm sure it'll be cheaper. In addition, the agreement that Mr. Williams signed, we want to borrow our own money, it's at 4.25%. So you all need to really consider the situation, and this precarious situation is with the relationship with the brokerage firm. You know, it, it's very important, because you shouldn't be bought, you know, leasing something where you have the money in your checking account. Actually, you have it in the CD, which is gonna mature in October. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to respond.
Commissioner, you heard from the city planner, Mr. Uzo, Mr. Carr. You have a, a motion that you would like to make or any other questions?
Sorry, Commissioner Bliss, how much did you say was in that?
I think it's about 60,000, maybe, 56,000. Yeah, I mean, I, I went back to fiscal years 16, 17, I think we started putting money in that line item then, 20,000 a year, and of course, we'd budgeted that for this year, but I don't know if all that money was put in that account for first of fiscal year or trickled in throughout the fiscal year, so my best guess is approximately so.
So I think the money is there to go this month, to go this year. I didn't know that we had signed an agreement with DEQ, is that what you said?
It's, that's the best management practice that we've committed to for our money.
But I mean, I think in lieu of that information, we're almost.
Obligated.
Obligated at this point, so I would feel comfortable in accepting the bid from Armstrong Bank for 36 months at 3.62% interest to lease the sweeper. The joint estate with high of 2018 Elgin Pelican Street.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hires. Is there a second?
I'll second that, and then I will ask a question.
Do I have a question?
Grant, legally, if we initially lease purchase something, and then three months, six months down the road, we decide to just use cash and pay it off, is there anything that would prohibit that in the lease purchase language, like an early penalty payoff clause?
I don't believe so. I haven't seen the specific language for this lease purchase arrangement, so I think it seems that you all have, so.
Okay.
I wouldn't let you all enter into agreement that bound us beyond the fiscal year due factor of whether they are cut off, give it our fiscal year, and you take possession of property if we don't buy it next year.
I think that question came up, you know, years and years ago. I can't even remember very specifically why or, you know, what piece of equipment we asked it, but they, they can't do that to, you know, a public entity, because it does create a quandary with commitment to the future and that kind of thing, because at any point, and I think it's because they include language saying at any point, we cannot budget for the future, for those future payments, and then we can't be paid on that.
Gotcha.
And that's a vague memory from a long time ago.
Typically, it's not on this short of the term. On a longer term, it would be.
Right, right. So.
I guess that's your question, I don't, I don't know the details yet. I presented with them.
Okay.
Clint? Is this another one of those things that, I mean, just for curiosity's sake, best management practice permit, DEQ acronyms must have, I've discovered that quite often, we're steered in a certain direction based upon those things being dropped into a conversation. Where does it specifically and explicitly and pointedly say, we have to operate a street sweeper or they will revoke our permit?
They wouldn't be that. They wouldn't revoke our permit, but that's what we committed to do in our project, when it's approved, and so we've committed to a number of things, outreach, education, and our water sampling over the next five-year period. And so to say that not, that it's not important to us to street, sweep the streets in an outstanding resource watershed, then it's gonna be a bit of a black eye on us.
Let me ask, because it's in theory ostensibly removed debris that otherwise finds its way into watershed.
Thousands of tons.
Are there, are there alternatives to street sweepers? Okay.
Would be a way to have a joint custody and a joint purchase of that between Stormwater, seeing as how they're getting some benefit, and the Street Department.
Yeah, absolutely.
And is it reminding the, the Stormwater Department to?
We did budget it.
Buy the thing out.
We did budget it. And this, and, and in defense of the Street Department, they've operated one of these for, as long as I can remember, I mean, before I, I mean.
At least eight years.
At least eight. Well, and I was making the point earlier, this is about the third one we bought while I've been either mayor or a counselor, and it does frankly irritate me a bit that we're constantly buying these capital pieces of equipment at a much faster rate than it seems like we'd opt to. But that's a discussion for another time, and I've been saying that for seven years, but anyway, the, it sounds like we need it.
Yep, same as Lou.
Okay.
Potentially, if we had a city garage, we might have to.
Store it next to the lawn mower?
Everybody gets, gets choked on the, the price tag on that one. That was one of our proposed maneuvers to, to try to put an end to some of that.
Well, I think Mr. Uzo had a great point with Edward Jones, and I think it should be considered on future capital purchases.
Yeah, that we're sitting on.
Yeah. We're, we're spending more interest on what we're receiving on our investment, and it's about to be insured and reinvested automatically, so.
All right, Councilors, any other questions before we call for a vote? Seeing them, Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Hires?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Commissioner Bliss?
Oh, the quandary. Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number eight is discussion, oh, thank you, thank you for the reminder. Mr. Green, we get suspended our item earlier, item number six.
I apologize.
That's not a problem at all. We'll get you started here. Let me reread the item just for technical purposes. Item six was discussion of possible action to accept 2016-2017 audit, and you and Ms. Curtis are listed on the item, and we will let you all run the show.
We have our foundation machine in this town, so we are.
We had a little trouble getting these put together. Our machine wasn't working right, and that was part of the reason why we were late, and we didn't have, we didn't get 11 or 12 of them, so we'll get those to you tomorrow. I think we got enough for you guys to share.
Yeah, we should put one of these. Okay.
They did receive an electronic copy.
Pardon me?
They did receive an electronic copy.
Okay. I'll get, we'll get that to you the rest of the afternoon, nice, tomorrow. Yeah. To be honest with you, the girl that puts them together was off, and we were trying to do our best to put them together, but.
We weren't very successful.
One, this is the auditor's report, and we do have a standard report here, which means that we've got a clean opinion. This is 2017 fiscal year, so we're pretty far behind on this as far as getting the financials and such done, but the report is a clean opinion. It's an, it's an unqualified report, which means there were no issues of material nature related to the financial statements. In other words, presentation of the financials are materially correct. That's basically what we're saying here. That's a good thing. Page 11. Three is your management's discussion and analysis. This is a report that your management puts together, and it's, it's sort of more of a narrative about what occurred during the year financially. It's not audited per se by us, but we do review it to make sure there's no glaring problems, but it's basically your management talking to you and saying, these are the things that occurred this year. And I know you folks have had a coffee with this. If you have any questions related to any of that, I'd be glad to visit the bottom. If not, if you, it's quite a bit, this report's pretty lengthy, there's a lot of good information in it, but the actual financials start on page 12, and this is government-wide statement of net position. Of course, now, under the new rules that started a few years ago, you, you actually issue two sets of financial statements, and this particular set's on the approval basis, and it's, it's more like a business balance sheet, page 12 is, but it does contain fixed assets and those kind of things. Under the old method of accounting with government funds, there was no fixed assets in the actual funds themselves. You had a different statements that helped the long-term debt, you had different statements that had helped the fixed assets. Anyway, this was a change that occurred some years ago. You can see that your total assets on your government activities were 39,600,000 there. Your total liabilities, about two-thirds of the way down, were 6,693,000. So you have quite a bit of unrestricted net position, which is fund balance, basically. The deferred outflows and inflows, that's stuff that deal with the pension funds, those are where there's some pretty wild gyrations we go through. with the pension funds, those are where there's some pretty wild gyrations we go through in regards to pension stuff and related to the present values and projected retirements that's going to occur in all this, those are true assets, basically, the 2.7 million deferred outflows is consumption of net assets applicable to a future period, okay? And the net deferred inflows below, which is like a liability, but it's not a true liability, is acquisition of net assets applicable to a future period, so it's where you're spending money and getting money that you haven't earned or owed truly yet, based on those pensions. Page 13 is the government-wide income statement, which begins with expenses and then shows, you see the column there, and then it has a column for charges for services, grants, capital grants, and then about two-thirds of the way over, you can see what your net, your net was based on expenses and charges for services and grants, of course, you always have a net loss because the entity, the city entity isn't there to make money, they're there to provide services, but if you flow down in that column where it says net expenses, revenue, government activities, you can see where it's made up the difference, and then your tax revenues make, sales tax revenues, and when you add those things in, in other words, at the top, if you were trying to make it like a business, you wouldn't be making it, you don't expect to, but when you throw in the tax revenues down towards the bottom, you actually wound up with a, you could say a net profit of 173,000, so you're in the black. I know that's a really weird-looking statement, but the one on page 14 really, to me, makes a little more sense, this is under the old funds method, and page 14 is the balance sheet the way that we used to look at it, you can see you've got general fund, capital improvement fund is your major fund, other funds are all your little cemetery care, stuff like that, are included in that category, and you can see there, you've got, these statements don't include capital assets, and they don't include the pension liability and all that stuff, and for some reason, the folks at Jazzby wanted these presented both ways, this is the old way, which probably makes more sense. Page 50, this is the income statement, which is the funds income statement, and it probably makes a little more sense too, you can see your general fund, capital improvement, other funds, you can see what your revenues were, general funds are, of course, your backbone of your city, 7.7 million in revenues, expenditures, 9.4 million, and of course, transfers in, you take that into account, under this method here for the financials, you have a net change in fund balance of 351,000, there's some reconciling items that occur on page 16, that it shows you some of that, and how it reconciles to the other government-wide financial statements. Don't ask me why they want it done this way, this is a, this is a way of doing it, I say new, I'm an old guy, this started probably 10 years ago, but I like to have it way better. The proprietary fund, which is sanitation, and then you have two component units, the TPFA and Tifa, is on page 17, that's the balance sheet for your business type entities, TPFA and Tifa are included there as part of the statements because they're so intertwined with the city, that they're pretty much, even though they're legal separate entities, they're pretty much the city, and they even have the same boards as the council and such, so that's the balance sheet for the proprietary funds. 18 is the income statement for your proprietary funds, and of course, the main one there is sanitation in regards to the city, TPFA and Tifa both have their own financial audits that are issued, but the change in net position for sanitation was 430,000, so that's, you could say that's net profit, that's good. Beyond that are the cash flow statement, which is a iteration of how the proprietary funds' cash was used and where it came from, then you have the footnotes, which are verbal representation of what occurred during the year, I'm going to try to go through all that, we'd be here all night, but the, the other thing is at the end of the financials, page 52, we have our internal control and compliance report, this is an important report, because this is the one that the state and the federal look at pretty close, this is a clean report except for the fact that we're late, and that is a compliance issue, and it is a internal control issue if we're not getting it done on a timely basis, so there's a recommendation letter that follows this, page 54, but basically, it's important, I think, that you guys get started about now, getting these financials pulled together, theoretically, they should be done and audited by the end of December, we're not even getting close to that, so that is a compliance issue, it is part of the state requirements, so that is in there. Beyond that, we issue a management recommendation letter, this is a report about things that weren't of a material nature, so it wasn't something important enough to put in your audit, but it's things where you have room for improvement, we had three things there, you can sit, you can read it yourselves, but basically, we need the fixed asset details not being updated on a regular basis, that's important to do that, it's difficult to go back and do that if you're actually at the end of the year, so the fixed asset detail, we believe, needs to be regularly updated monthly and kept up with. We also noticed that some purchase orders, the invoices, were dated prior to the purchase order, that sort of indicates that maybe it got bought before approval was made on it, again, these were small things, so it's an internal control issue you could deal with, you want to be sure that you get the approvals prior to purchasing stuff. And lastly, there, there wasn't a, it was noted that the books are not being properly closed at the end of each accounting period, it's important, I think, monthly for these books to be closed, that way, when you get a financial report, it's not going to change two months later or something, there needs to be an actual closing process set up, and I know you've got new people that's, that's working with a lot of this, and I know too that they're, they are putting a lot of effort into fixing this stuff, or it may already be fixed, but these are issues where you do have room for improvement. That's really it, unless you have any questions.
Counselors, any questions of Mr. Green?
Mr. Green, do you have any recommendations for training opportunities for our staff to kind of get them where they need to be?
You know, I don't write off hand, the kind of training that they would need is pretty special on us, because every, every city, like every school, is a little bit different, so if they went and trained somewhere, for example, if they went to Salasaw, well, they're probably not going to do things the same way, it's going to be different, depending on the system that they have and what they've got going on. I will do this, I'll try to come up with some ideas for you in training, it would probably be related to having somebody actually come in house and work with them on the system, and once they get a pretty good understanding of the system, teach them the folks what they think could be to, to make it more efficient.
More like a technical systems type contract?
Yes.
So that we wouldn't fall behind again, so that we can better comply with the two areas that you need to do?
I tell you, you could probably do that, I don't know where you're at on hiring for your compilation this year, but Barry would probably be pretty good at doing the training for you, I think he did all your compilation work this year, there's a number of folks that would be good at doing that, but as far as like going to a school somewhere, I don't think it would be that beneficial, I think somebody needs to come here and get house training.
Mr. Green, under the, the new peer requirements and all the changes that have happened for auditors over the last few years, would that be a conflict of interest for Mr. Spires to come in and provide technical assistance to us, and then also still provide our compilation?
No, even, even if he felt like it was an independence issue, all he would have to do in the compilation report is just state that he's not independent, nobody's going to care, it's the audit that they'd be worried about, so he, he could do something like that if he chose to use it, and then he would be able to do the compilation too, he might have to change his report a little bit.
Do you think it would be of great value to us to have that CPA, licensed CPA on staff to provide that oversight and assistance because of?
I think it would be, I think, if you want my opinion on it, if you had someone here even a couple of days a week or something, that's overseeing and assisting the folks here, I think it'd be very beneficial, at least for a period of time, you know, several months to a year, and that, to me, if someone were able to come in, week, once a week, twice a week, whatever you decided, can actually sit down and assist these folks with their closing and see what's happening, and say, you know, "This isn't correct, we need to fix it now before months and months go by," all right, that'd be a little beneficial. Personal opinion.
Well, your personal opinion is very valuable, with your years of experience as CPA, so we greatly appreciate any feedback.
Appreciate you folks.
I have a question, not him, but it's the mayor. Didn't he just kind of describe the duties of the treasurer?
Yeah.
I think that was being talked about on the center table, yeah.
I would like to point out that this was 1617 audit, I was hired in August. So, it's a little bit unfair.
That was, that was going to come up, but I wanted anybody to say their, their piece first.
I did, I didn't mean to demean anybody's work, performance, when you, I think I told you folks last year, that when you bring in a new staff, it's going to be a pretty steep learning curve initially, and the lady I know already, or the staff here, are already working pretty hard at getting things lined out, improvements.
Pretty heroic effort from my perspective, anyway.
Yes.
Counselors, any other questions or comments of four or two, Mr. Green?
I would just like to say thank you, I think you all have done a, done a great job for us this year, so we appreciate you and the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there a motion to accept the audit? For a second, to Counsel Long's motion?
Second.
Second, to Counsel Hires? Any final questions, comments, roll call, please.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Long?
Yes.
Counsel Combs?
Yes.
Counsel Bliss?
Yes.
Yes. And now then we jump ahead to item eight, which is discussion, thank you all again, discussion of possible action to hire an animal control officer and code enforcement officer in the managerial department, Mr. Carr, these are not two different positions slash on, sorry, let me clarify.
This is a recommendation of the members of the interviewing group to hire Vicki Green as the next animal control slash code enforcement officer at a T-112, step two.
Is Vicki here with us tonight?
Vicki is here, she's in the front row right there.
Hi Vicki.
Hello.
I will make a happy motion if we hire Vicki to fill that vacancy.
Is there a second to Counsel Long's motion?
Second.
And second to Counsel Hires, clerk, would you give us a roll call, please?
Counsel Combs?
Yes.
Counsel Bliss?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Congratulations, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
And we've got item nine, which is discussion of possible action to hire a human resource director in the managerial department, Mr. Carr?
It's a recommendation to hire Ms. Mylin Pate as the next human resource director as a T-112, step four.
I will make the motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second? Second, to Counsel Hires, I usually make note of the name, but I will wait for it here in the minutes, my, my, what did I say that we need one?
Did you spell that?
It's M hyphen L Y, get an S, apostrophe D.
Okay.
Sorry, apostrophe D. It's okay, it's M, I apologize, L Y N.
I gave the full spelling out for me.
And Pate.
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 P A.
Thank you. Can we get you to change your name?
I only changed it once.
Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counsel Bliss?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Long?
Yes.
Counsel Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Congratulations, Mylin.
Mylin.
Mylin?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is discussion of possible action to hire a driver in the solid waste department, Mr. Carr, you're up one more time.
Our recommendation to hire Johnny Kelly in the solid waste department at a T-112, step two.
Can you spell that? I'm kidding. You heard the recommendation, is there a motion?
Motion to approve is presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, roll call, please.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Counsel Long?
Yes.
Counsel Combs?
Yes.
Counsel Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 11 is discussion of possible action to create an overtime account in the amount of $4,600 for the FBI Safe Trails Working Group, UK.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, this is a new fiscal year, so new account, basically to a loan to this account for officers to work that are involved with the FBI Safe Trails Working Group for their paid overtime, the FBI reimburses this, so this is just a loan to $4,600, it's basically the quarterly amount that we are allowed to be paid by the FBI for those officers, we have a cap on what we can be paid monthly, so basically, I've just asked for one quarter's worth of pay, hopefully by the end of that quarter, we've got enough money coming in from the FBI to help.
Cash flow.
Fund, yes, cash flow, so I wasn't asking the Council to come up with $16,000.
And just for a bit of explanation, the Safe Trails grant, is it similar to some of the other enforcement grants that we've had in the past?
It's not actually a grant, this is a, basically a task force through the FBI that we have one officer assigned to, now they've requested a second officer, they don't work there full-time, but it's, for instance, both of the, the officer involved now is three nights a week, he's working another eight hours for the FBI, basically, on federal cases, on federal investigations, so it's not interfering with his daily work, we still have him 40 hours for the telephone police department, but he's working on federal cases in our, in our jurisdiction and in others that the FBI covers, so this goes to help enforce crime on Indian country, is what this task force is for.
I will make a motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second to Counsel Long's motion?
Second.
Any other questions of the chief? Clerk, if you've got the motion and the second, we'll take a roll call.
Counsel Long?
Yes.
Counsel Combs?
Yes.
Counsel Bliss?
Yes.
Counsel Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief.
Item number 12 is discussion of possible action to adopt ordinance number 1264, 2018, amending Part 12 of Chapter 5, Blood Damage Prevention, to include a severability clause and amend the definition of development. We've been here before, go ahead, Mr. Johnson, we've been here already twice, but.
Can you hit my, my picture button?
This is only like the second time I've had to do this, so bear with me.
I like using our fancy.
Yeah, I do too, if I can find the button.
It's a nice, we're using the gyro mouse.
We'll see how that goes. Okay.
Gyro mouse. Mm-hmm, really moving on up, telling you. So, like Mayor Nichols referred, this is an action item. We've talked about this a couple of times. We're amending the flood damage prevention chapter of the planning and development part to address some issues that were identified by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board when they audited our flood program. And so, this is what you guys have seen in your packet. They asked that we include the storage of equipment and materials in our definition of development. And then they asked that we add a severability clause. And I think the gyro mouse just.
I didn't do it.
Crazy.
Yeah, I didn't hit the button, I promise.
Rage on it. So, you guys should have all that in your packet. You don't have to have the screen to make the motion.
Well, there was a number of pages to that, right? I mean, it was quite, it was just the one page?
Yep, just that. That's, that's it. Yeah, that's not the upcoming stuff.
You said this is actionable item.
Actional item.
Okay. I will make motion to approve this presentation.
Oh, good. We have our screen back at least for, there we go. So, now we can move forward with comfort and confidence.
I think I broke the laptop earlier.
Oh, okay.
Actually, it's me.
You have your gyro mouse.
I didn't know if we were gonna get a second without screens, but they're back now, so. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other questions or comments? Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 13 is discussion to adopt a, no, that's, discussion, adopt ordinance number 1265-2018, amending Parts 12, Planning and Development, and 14 Streets and Public Works, and creating Part 12, Chapter 15, outdoor parklets.
So, this, this is the lengthy one that you found in your packet. And this is a, a new thing that's happening around the country. And Counselor Hires looked into this. I did. He, he wanted, he requested that I look into it a little further and see how we can utilize it in our community as well. And so, we looked through some existing ordinances in other communities and found one that we thought, you know, reflected our desires for the parklet idea in our community. And so, this is your first look at that. You know, the genesis of this happened last week, so you didn't get it in your overnight packet. I emailed it to you. This is the first reading. I imagine we'll probably have more than one, or more than two discussions about this. It's a, it's a, I don't know, a difficult idea to wrap your head around, allowing a private entity to occupy a public space for their profit-making endeavor. So, we first heard this concept a few years back when Al Soto had his drip coffee shop located next door to Casper Lane. And it was a small place that seemed to be crowded often, and people would rather sit outside. And so, he came to us asking about, I have this bump out in front of my store, I got this empty parking spot that nobody ever parks in, or one student parks in and is there all day. Is there any way I can utilize that as a seating area instead of blocking your sidewalk in front of my store? And so, we thought, it's an interesting idea. And we kicked the can and we never, we never came back and did it. And the drip has since moved and he has a nice outdoor seating area. And now it's come back. And so, I hope you guys can find time in the next two weeks to read through the ordinance. I know you just received it, so any questions that you might have are more conceptual than about the, the meat of the ordinance that I proposed. It's been to Attorney Lloyd for review a couple of times. There's some corrections that I need to make for the copy that you have. They're not major, but that's kind of the, what we're going at is what you guys have. If you want to see some images that I found on the internet of parklets.
That's one that we saw two years ago when we were looking, I think.
Yeah, yeah, it's like the first one that shows up in Google Parklet. Little different vantage point.
So, we, we didn't get any complaints whatsoever when we did the bump outs?
None.
Are these going to replace the bump outs, or are they going to be in addition to what's already there?
Um, I think it's a case-by-case situation.
Okay, so it'd be, but I guess a business would apply for one or two spaces.
We would say, nah, you gotta keep your bump outer. Yeah, it looks like a great idea.
Are they planned? Are there anything planned? Is there anything planned?
Planned?
Yeah.
Is anybody waiting and waiting to do it at the moment, is there?
Yes.
That wasn't mentioned earlier. Yeah, and so the.
I'll let Counselor Hires explain that.
This came about, I mean, it came about through, you know, the urban design. And so Al, Mr. Soto, was the first that kind of brought it to us. And it was utilizing his, the existing bump out that was in front of his business. And so, the Cherokee Nation has, the court mall operates the court mall downtown. And so, if you've been through there, you see that Cherokee, in front of the court mall, there are two bump outs that have been, that are just like the traditional bump outs. But there's some thought in opening up the, the front of that building, and opening up the front of that building, allowing for outside patio. And so, when we.
Wanted to talk about the court mall, I got a cafe, and I wish I would have grabbed the picture, knowing that he wanted to discuss a particular proposal, unofficial proposal. And if you'll look at their situation, they have a bump out in front of their business that, I think, I don't know if you're dumping the coffee in the soil or something, but the tree that's located there is about twice as tall as any of the other trees.
There's two trees.
And one, there's two.
Two bump outs. And there's a tree in both bump outs.
Yes.
That are the tallest trees.
They're, they're in the balcony. And if you're familiar with the court mall, it has that balcony. And the trees are just growing into that balcony. And something else that kind of bodes well for the Cherokee Nation's idea of a parklet in that position is they have plans, with all intention, I assume, to resurface that parking lot and expand it that's located south of the court mall. I've seen renderings of a painted parking lot that connects out to Choctaw and expanding parking over there behind the, the arts.
Cultural, Cherokee Nation cultural.
Yeah.
Art center.
And so, they're bringing, they're tying all that in together and repaving, reservicing, creating walks, walkways, and landscaping. And so, I think by paving that, we're gonna see an increase in parking spots and by replacing that gravel parking lot that people kind of get in where they can fit in, so.
So, I would just say, before we lose control of the conversation, the idea is not to remove parking spots from downtown, or take parking spots away from Mistoke Avenue. The idea is to potentially utilize the bump outs in a different way to allow them to be a little bit more functional for business and pedestrian use.
Sure. Each application is gonna be case-by-case, and we're gonna look at that certain situation, the availability of parking, the opportunity for additional parking, if we replace that with a parklet. And so, that, that is gonna be heavy in our consideration.
Tess, did you have a question a moment ago?
Yeah, I think Mr. Hires kind of addressed it though. You said that that wasn't the idea was to take away the parking, but essentially that's what you're doing.
No, the parking spaces have already been utilized by the bump out. They're already there. So, you can park on it now because it's got, some of them have a tree, some of them planters, some of them have a parking bench on it. But it would be like in, like in the court mall case, it would be there are two bump outs directly in front of the court mall. So, rather than have those two bump outs, it would be replaced with a parklet.
Now, we're talking about in between the bump outs?
No, over the top of the bump outs. So, when you, when you look at it, you wouldn't see individual bump outs any longer, or the big, you would now see.
So, would that be, I mean, is that, that's what other businesses have disadvantages, they're not directly in front of a bump out?
That, I mean, that's, you're, I mean, that's philosophical.
In the way he's presented the ordinance, he has a lot of discretion. There doesn't have to be a bump out or there to be a parklet or any place. It's up to three parking spaces.
Potential there to be at another place other than an existing.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't follow your question. But yeah, the, the parking that exists downtown isn't adequate and never will be adequate.
I'm not trying to jump into your discussion, but you also mentioned, just so that you guys could consider, he said something to the effect of considering if you want it regionally located, or if you want the citywide too, to consider that aspect. Because the way it's written, it's citywide.
Yeah. We, we wanted to leave it open as much as we can, because we don't, can't fathom what proposal we'll get. And so, we're gonna look at each proposal on case-by-case. It didn't seem necessary to make a district restriction, because there might be something that we just didn't think of that works somewhere else.
I think it's a miniscule step in the right direction for what we need to do to make this town a walkable city.
Yep. So. I couldn't agree more. I think it's a great idea.
I do too.
Uh, two questions. Number one, who is going to evaluate and potentially approve these? Are these all going to come to council, or are these all going to be you or one letting them into that?
Me. And then, city administrator has the ultimate say.
Okay.
And if I say it's approved, you can.
And then my second question would be like Counselor Hires, you were talking about the trees that would potentially, that are living in those parklets now. And so, obviously those would have to be removed in order to create such beautiful things such as this. And we're saying right now, because of the caffeination that the trees are getting, they are growing and potentially causing more problems than benefits because of the roots and the size of them.
And you know, if we receive their application, we might say, hey, we really like what you're doing, but we're gonna need you to plant two trees. I mean, it's, it's really given us a lot of flexibility to massage this how we want to make it work for our community and still make it work for them.
Let Diane Weston's ears be burning, right? Talk about cutting down a tree. Yes, sir. Clifford?
Just comment, I don't see why you'd have to cut down a tree. You look in front of the twig and there's a tree that's been, had a deck put over the whole base of it. So, I don't see anything about this recommendation that would require the removal of a tree.
That's, that'll be a conversation we have with that particular proposal when it comes forward. But, yeah, conceptually, there's no requirement.
Can I just ask, first of all, I want to say, I think this is a fantastic idea. But I'm curious, would they be temporary in that they could easily be removed?
That was our original discussion a couple of years ago. I don't know what you all have talked about since.
Yeah, they're not gonna be able to.
So, they could be for days, or weeks, or months?
Theoretically, we put in there, if it's, I think if it's not used for 15 days, it's automatically revoked to your license.
What business ceases to do the answer for 15 days? So, you know, you had a week-long vacation or something, that wouldn't.
And they're not transferable. If you sell your business, you're gonna have to apply.
For a new one.
Any other questions?
Can they drink alcohol out there?
Go ahead. If you follow all the restrictions and guidelines.
The way that's drafted, though, I've read it, interpreted, wherein a bar could not have one, the Sanlon Bar, it'd have to have food associated with it.
It's incidental to food.
So, neds can't have a bump out?
Correct. Unless they become a food.
A colon.
Just something to consider, no? Sure. All right. Is it open for modifications? Do you all see fit?
All right. Well, we've got two weeks to take a look back at that, and we'll go on to item number 14, which is discussion to adopt ordinance number 1266, 2018, vacating workholding part of the following sanitary sewer easement located on blocks two and three, block two of the Thompson subdivision. And there is a big legal description that's on your screen that I will not read. Clint Johnson?
All right. So, I was approached by Jason Ryan about this property in vacating the easement. I gave him the standard language that if we can vote to vacate the easement through an ordinance, however, it isn't permanently closed until you sue us in district court and you don't contest that. And the judicial system makes that permanently close. Otherwise, we could pass an ordinance, vacate the easement, three months from now, you guys could go ahead and reopen it if we felt it necessary. So, we are going through this exercise, I think to make either a lender or contract situation happy. It's a sewer line easement that is in, is located within that light blue area. However, Barry Tucker, the superintendent from TPWA, from the sewer office, said that the sewer line's not located under that building. And the building, let me see if I can use this fancy thing. Right there, this building. Didn't exist before the black, but yeah, this one did before the survey flat. And so, this one's in the legal description, less than except. This one needs to be. So, the hash that's in the blue lines, you'll see it better, right there, the red hash is gonna be what we vacate, and all the white blue will remain in the sewer easement. Now, I don't know if I confused you.
Only a little, probably two weeks to take a look at the red and blue mask.
Discussion only.
Basically, you're saying those buildings, the only portions of those buildings that lie within that easement are the part we're vacating. The revised easement will still be the blue part with the.
Correct. Less than except the buildings, or less than except.
The red part.
The red part, yes.
Oh. What are the buildings?
I think little tiny red houses. I'm not 100% sure.
They're filming.
If you, if you want to know where we're at, so, this is, this is Choctaw up here, and we're on the south side. And so, right here is west. And this is that young.
Young construction.
Young construction on that corner.
Counselor, this isn't an action item, so we'll have to wait for a couple of weeks to make the change if you also choose to do so. And if you don't have any questions, we'll skip along to the next item.
You got a red dot there.
Nice. Item number 15, discussion to adopt ordinance number 1267-2018, amending Part 12, Planning and Development, Chapter 2, zoning, general and district provisions. Chuck?
So, I think most of us are familiar with VRVO or Airbnb, the short-term vacation rentals. A lot of people are putting a spare bedroom or a garage apartment on the website for short-term rental. Well, our existing code doesn't address that situation. It, it tried, funny enough. And this is the ordinance that changes amendments to the ordinance that proposing. So, right now in definitions of our existing code, we have a definition for tourist home. And if you'll read that definition and think about Airbnb, and VRVO, that's kind of your typical setup. You have a permanent homeowner, lives in the house, rents spare rooms, leaves for the weekend, or, or rents out the garage apartment. Well, unfortunately, they created a good definition that fits some future concept like Airbnb, but they didn't, they didn't put tourist home as a permitted use in any of the zoning districts. So, tourist home isn't permitted in R1 single-family, R2-2 family, or R3-3 family dwelling district. And so, my goal here is to find a place for tourist home. And my recommendation is the R2 zoning district. There, a lot of our existing R2 zoning districts are because of the fact a property has a garage apartment or a mother-in-law suite. And those are typically what are converted in this type of situation, where you have a primary homeowner still living at that residence, renting out a spare space. And so, that's what I'm proposing to you guys, is to begin to address this Airbnb situation, short-term vacation rental situation. short term vacation rental situation by placing tourist home in a permitted, has a permitted use in a zoning district. And my recommendation again, it's R2 two family dwelling district. No, a form-based code is going to be more of our aesthetic design standards. And so, you know, you might want to do a form-based code for your downtown or your historic preservation district to have uniformity in the buildings. And you don't have this odd duck. You don't really care as much what goes on inside, what, you know, if it's C1, C2, C3, you just care what it looks like, what the facade looks like. And so you can make that, if you want it to all look like log cabin, you can create a form-based code and everybody has to make their facade look like a log cabin. Or you can make everything look Victorian or modern. And that's more of what a form-based code is about is it looks.
So if we put this in. I'm embarrassed to ask this question because it might be another question. If we put this in R2, that means it couldn't be located if it was like in a C1? Or it could be. Because C1 is above.
R1 would be the only one excluded, so residential one districts could not have that operation.
We're going to make sure that way, not cascade and what that.
So nightly rentals wouldn't be permitted in R1. If you wanted to have a nightly rental, you'd ask to rezone as an R2 property.
Correct.
If you occupied the structure right, it would.
Yes, yes. If you have built or bought and remodeled a structure and you don't want to live there, but you want to rent it out, this doesn't apply to you. You have to be in the R3 zoning district. If you guys like that, we'll keep it that way. If you guys want to change that, we can work to change it as well. So I'll just throw that out.
I've got a question. I'm in R1. I Cherokee National Holiday, Airbnb my whole house. I can't do that? Well, then I don't like it. I'm serious. There are plenty of other cities who are allowing it in R1. Why would we exclude that?
Because there's plenty of other citizens that don't want it next door to them.
Yeah, so you'll have to rezone and it'll get the mail out to the neighbors and then it'll get approved and so.
Your neighbors, just like your Mission Street issue, would be notified. They would be notified of your zoning request. Everybody would come and say, hey, we don't want your Airbnb next door to me because there's pedophiles there.
I have a hard time believing that this is the way other cities, growing cities are managing this.
Well, and Mr. Johnson, I wouldn't be opposed to like a one time a yearly usage permit.
We're not going to catch that, just to be honest. That's not what we're going to catch. Do it. Just to be honest, you put it on one day a weekend, that's off our radar.
What did I get?
We're not getting complaints on your agenda.
Why would we want to stop potential, going from both sides? Stop people from being able to do that in nice neighborhoods.
Could you come to the microphone?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have something more than ideas.
Well, and I think there's potential for tourism to collect on this. So they do this in Bentonville. They don't have to rezone their homes, R1. And they plan tourism tax, hotel motel tax on this. So I know that's going to take some changes in the way that our hotel motel tax is written. But why would we restrict ourselves?
I bet everybody self reports that tax too. I'm sure.
Well, I think it becomes a situation where Airbnb will even help you with that.
Collect upfront.
So we're looking for some of that self-reporting around.
Where's our $12? I don't know.
And this is not.
Right now, none of it is permissible. You're not allowed to do that at any point.
This is looser than it was, right?
Yes, because tourist home doesn't have a home.
And we all know that they currently exist.
They're around.
Absolutely. I receive complaints weekly about Airbnbs and that's why we're here.
And in the staff's defense and everybody did, we dealt, our codes discombobulated. We're confused as to how to handle it, so.
This wouldn't. An Airbnb that if I, if I just bought a house in downtown Talalpa and fixed it up and put it on VRVO as an Airbnb, I don't live there, it's not my primary residence.
You better be R3.
So that doesn't even, this doesn't even touch that because this is talking about. Then that house would then become a business in my residence or in a residence.
It's actually called a tourist court instead of tourist home in our definitions.
So this would only be my house. I'm renting it for the holiday or I'm renting it to traveler, you know, to.
That's just people. Or you have a mother-in-law suite or a garage apartment or something like that.
It solves about 80% of our problems.
Is this actionable tonight as a movement?
No. No, it's just discussion. You'll find plenty of ways, okay, you're going to find plenty of ways to call COVID. That's before we move on. Yes, Tess?
So the compliance officer is not allowed to enter somebody's residence, right?
There are situations that you can't.
In the overwhelming majority of the cases?
No. We don't want them to.
How would you guys know?
Just crawl in on the side.
We get on Airbnb or VRVO and we see your address on.
Like a teleplugs, you wouldn't post.
Pretty detective.
Yeah, we should creep people's profile.
Ah, seeing how there is no action for this item as well, we will, I mean, unless there is an objection, in town there will be one. We'll move on to item 16, which is discussion to lease real property located near the southwest corner of the intersection of Airport Parkway and Phoenix Avenue, more particularly described as you see on your screen. Johnson.
So, sad for Pross, I must say, about the possibility of leasing some vacant city of Talalpa owned property located south of the natural gas refueling station in the industrial park. Picture that in your head and.
Quick question, in the industrial park?
It's not technically.
Not technically, okay, because you said too conflicting.
It's not owned by TIS.
Gob, oh, okay, okay.
There is an image.
It's on the board of it, but it's not.
Yep.
Okay.
By the Peter Dam, right?
There is a creek. How many acres? I can't answer that yet, but it's a fairly large parcel of property. We are, this just kind of like Parklet started happening last week. And I tried to make everybody happy and I brought it to you guys.
I mean, my inbox was flooded with like requests for purchase and lease and all these descriptions of like, oh my gosh.
Yes. And so the organization that's interesting in leasing this property is Habitat for Humanity. And I don't know if you're familiar, but they have a resale shop at the corner of College and First Street. And I don't know if you've experienced attempting to drop off things there or purchase things there. It's a cluster that ain't easy to get around. And it's obvious that they need more space. They continue to add on to the west side of their building. A lot of the areas are not climate controlled. It's exposed to the elements. So some of the stuff that we try to donate for a better good gets damaged by the weather because they don't have anywhere else to put it. And so what they're proposing is building a new resale shop and warehouse at this location that's easily accessed and it's on the way to the sanitation facility. So somebody might decide to stop there and donate it instead of throwing it in a hole in the ground. So Linda Cheetham with Habitat is here and I'm sure she can enlighten you about the particulars of her concept and how they plan on making it happen.
Cheetham.
Linda Cheetham, the director for Talalpa Habitat. Craig Clifford is the president of our organization. This discussion has been going on since October of last year under the resource committee and the board. I prepared a little information that went out in your packets regarding Habitat for Humanity. We're a Christian housing ministry. Since 1990, when we were formed, we had built 25 houses and we've done 50 painting and repair projects here in Cherokee County. Cherokee County is our service area. In July 1st of 2018, nationwide, there were 898 Habitat restores that were owned by 705 affiliates. And one way that we help fund Habitat houses and repairs is through the sale of donated items through the Habitat Restore. So the store that Clint mentioned on the corner of First and College opened July the 1st of 2014. So it's been in business now for four years. And in April 1st of last year, we opened a secondary store behind the post office selling used clothing. When people donate to us, they just donate everything. The only store that we're talking about at this location is the Home Improvement Store that is on the corner of First and College. We'll repurpose that store to continue with house building. So we originally started with 3,500 square feet in the building. We expanded it to 6920 square feet in 2015 and we're out of space. As you mentioned, I mean, there's just stuff everywhere. And Habitat International, the Restore Oversight Committee there recommends a minimum of 12,000 square feet. What we would like to do, if we could get a low cost lease for this property, is to build a 20,000 square foot building, about 100 wide by about 200 long, 15,000 square feet of retail space at about 5,000 square feet with a drive-through donation. So we don't have donations sitting out on the sidewalk. We know it's unsightly, we try to keep it in, but it's just difficult to manage. And processing area, offices, things like that. So that's basically what we're looking at. We've looked at everything in town and this space is nice and flat, is in a good location. People might stop on the way to the dump and give us their stuff, they do that anyway. We have to sort through a lot of things. But we provide employment to 12 employees, just sorting donations and processing donations. And the Restore income helps to build the houses right here in Talalpa and Cherokee County. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Councillor, wrong, excuse me, sorry.
If this was being approved, Linda, what would be your ETA on having it complete?
Well, we've already been funded by the USDA and they are just waiting to do the letter of commitment to see if we can have a low cost lease or if we're going to have to buy it. We're hoping that by next summer that we could actually be in the process of moving. But I know that things move slower than what we'd like, so we can't promise that. But we have to have a commercial contractor, we have to have bids and we hope to move, we hope to be in the process of moving late spring and over the summer.
And then my next question, if you are to make this facility happen, that would eliminate, you would no longer be at the location across from the tag office?
The Home Improvement Store would no longer be at that location. We own the building, Habitat owns that building. And that's where our administrative offices are. And there would be something else that would go into there that Habitat would own. We haven't completely decided the purpose. But the Home Improvement Store would completely move to this location and we would try to re-educate the public to take their donations there instead of just leaving them on the sidewalk.
Probably move the clothing store to there.
Okay, we would probably move the clothing store over to that location.
And so then potentially the location now by the tag office would be completely eliminated. We play basically musical chairs. Everything's going to rotate and something will be left vacant. And the reason why I ask is because I've had several people specifically state, and I think Craig, you might have said it, that behind the post office where the semi-trailer is now, a lot of the donations are that are outside in the elements, unsightly.
It is.
And I know a lot of businesses there that surround it are kind of unhappy with it. And I know you can't be out there 24 hours a day stopping people from putting items on the sidewalk. I understand that.
Yes, so that probably would be what we would do is to move the clothing store to the corner of First and College. They need more space. We have a locked area where the trailer could back in. That's the poundage trailer, what that is. And then we have a canopy that's kind of like a double way carport that we would still accept clothing donations over there. And then the regular furniture, household items, building supplies, we would funnel over to this location. But it will take some time to educate the public.
Right. Thank you, that was very helpful.
Grant, are we bound by fair market value or like a bidding process on something like this? Multiple enterprises?
It would just have to be a reasonable rate of return on our investment there, so to speak. But reasonable is free old and defined. I'd also let you all know, this is not actionable tonight, the way it's written, so just so you know. But yeah, that's, reasonable is up to the councils on that. In that regard, I can't tell you what that would be. Legal, so it's hard for you to determine that too, I would think.
So we'll know more when we bring this back at midnight.
I guess so. I know as much as you know.
I will look to get as much information as I can to start working on a contractual agreement.
I think what you're doing is really good. It's a very good thing. You want to build a permanent.
Yes.
Feature and lease land from us?
Well, if you sell it to us for not very much, we could likely buy it. But the problem is, you know, dollars and cents. And I was under the impression the city doesn't sell the land, they lease their land. There's a lot of entities in that area who lease for I think a dollar a year maybe. We'd like a very low lease. We have already been approved for funding with the USDA to build the structure. And we are just ready to start the building process as soon as we can get some bids.
Is it a 30 year? Did you get a 30 year?
40 year.
40 year?
Yes.
So Linda, is that a, is that a grant or a loan?
It is a loan.
So it's like a low interest loan too?
Yes, it's 3.875% for 40 years. And yes, and we've already been approved.
And that's the terms from the USDA. So if the city is not a metabol, the best kind of lease length, then we would hope for renewal purposes built into it or.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I included in the packet the policy for the USDA lease. They want to lease the length of the loan, although they would take a 30 year note. They prefer the 25. So maybe it could be 25 renewable for another 25 or something like that. But the policy was included in the USDA requires that they also approve the lease and that it not have any restrictions. That's what the policy says.
And not that this would happen, but what would happen is if you guys had built the building and things didn't work out, the city has this building sitting on our property. What could we do then?
Well, we haven't discussed that because things are going to work out. Since we opened this, the Home Improvement Store four years ago, we have more donations than we can manage. We also have calculated that we have processed 988,969 pounds of items that might have gone into the city landfill that had been repurposed and sold to the public. Habitat International has a formula they use for that. So it's a benefit to the city as well as to the residents that are going to be able to have some Habitat houses.
Before we come back in a couple of weeks, the, and this is going to be very easy to misinterpret as me not being keen on this idea, I actually very much am. And the reason I'm listing these is that we can knock them in the head over the next two weeks.
is that we can knock them in the head over the next two weeks. A 25-year restriction on the lease term, is that creep next to us a blue line on a FEMA map? And that's going to affect some things?
It's not in the flip.
Is it not? Okay.
Yeah, we've already checked that.
Okay, great. Okay, there's one already gone.
Yeah.
And then we have to figure out what reasonable is, and again, I mean, up to the council, that kind of thing. And then we need to get a real clear answer to the worst-case scenario, what if there isn't a Habitat for Humanity inside the 25 or 40-year timeframe? I mean, I don't think that's going to come to pass, but obviously, you all are probably some more stable, you know, nonprofits in the community, as far as I can, I mean, off the top of my head.
And they build on the land.
But there's a USDA loan involved, it's collateral for the loan, I would assume.
It would be like?
It could collateral as our land, though.
It's just a?
Permanent structure becomes on the land, though, it's part of the land, it's not.
But then we do assume the loan, because any, there's a lot of little, there's technical things. I'm sure, I'm sure this has been addressed in other places, and we can figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah. But those are about three or four little things that I could see right away, but I bet we can get it resolved, and we'll need to know the actual acreage to help us define what reasonable is. But we can get all those things worked out internally when we come back in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Or so that we're ready when we come back in a couple of weeks. Counselors, do you have any other questions of the potential less or like? Which was like a less easy? Less easy? Yeah. Hearing that, I guess we will see you in a couple of weeks, and we'll try to get a few of those things kind of ironed out.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We're going to go to item 17 on the agenda, regardless of what your screen says. And, oh, it said 17 now. That's discussion and possible action related to request for proposal process of sealed bids for sale and/or leasing property located at the legal description that is once again found on your screen. It's about 65 acres more or less. Mr. Johnson?
So, I didn't include that.
All right.
So, I sent out an RFP last week for this property that was due 21 days. So, last week, 21 days out, so August 24th. However, without, I didn't know that you guys back in May said you wanted the RFP done no later than August 30th. So, I sent it out the day you guys wanted it done, and for that I apologize. I was working on the county's temporary easement, which will expire September 19th. So, there's an RFP out, it will be published twice in the Daily Press. Hopefully, we get a lot of sealed bids, and we can do something really new for this property, and I'll sell it.
Okay. I know that somewhere in my inbox, though, I ended up receiving a, some information regarding this property. I'm putting to get, because my inbox was bombarded with three pages of legal descriptions, it's been hard to put A to A, B to B, but this is the property of the North End of Seaters Land. Correct? Okay. We like to call it the bike trails property. Sure.
I think you're asking for reaction tonight to extend that deadline to what you put on your RFP, correct?
Yes. Can we have a motion to extend?
You can say it definitely if you want it, but it's going to close on August 24th. And so, say August 25th, we can save.
So, then it'll be back on our agenda for the first meeting in September?
Yeah. Whatever that be, September 4th or whatever the date is. We extend it to our regular meeting date in September.
Labor Day?
Motion will be?
Well, I will second your motion if we know what your motion is.
I think somebody's looking up the date, I thought it was the fourth.
The fourth is Tuesday following Labor Day.
So, we have a motion to extend to the fourth, and second from Counselor Long.
Excuse me, can I be heard?
Hold on, not yet, but we have a motion in a second? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And we're going to, Mr. Duke, now, again, I needed to clarify that for a moment. Lee was Combs and then Long.
I don't want to interrupt, take a lot of time, I just want to register our objection on the part of several bidders who actually made bids relying on the date that was given in City Council Meeting, and that was, that date was given on record, just to be sure that I get that objection in for the record. It may be pertinent later at some time, just want to make sure I covered that.
Any other questions, comments? Kirk, give us a roll call, please.
I have a question.
Oh, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
So, bids were made based upon the date of the City Council?
I believe we received bids today or last week or something like that.
I understand, or at least, we'll just say there were bids submitted last week, and anybody that submitted a bid in advance of this new deadline, if you guys choose, I could resubmit again, of course. There's no prohibition against that, but there's apparently a misunderstanding by Mr. Johnson on dating, and so that's before we find ourselves today, and it's not a wishy-washy thing.
Yeah, we would, we would consider all their bids as received, but in our RFP in the paper, we did provide specifications for bidding requirements, so they'd have to meet those requirements that were described in our RFP.
There was no RFP issued before the 3rd of August, before anybody submitted it?
Correct.
Well, do you know exactly what it was submitted to? What RFP?
The RFP, the third.
Okay, so, hold on, are we going to motion in a second? Count Combs and Long to extend to the 24th?
To the 4th.
I apologize, to the 4th, the meeting date. Questions, comments, reactions, last time. Kirk, roll call, please.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, thank you very much. We'll wait the bids. Number 18, a discussion of possible action related to proposals for videography for, our videography services for the City of Talagul, approved in 18 through 2019. Mr. Murphy, Ms. Murphy, excuse me?
So, this is the contract for Mr. Bernard and his recording of our conversations, which he received also. The highlighted sections would be the ones that may have been adjusted in comparison to his previous contracts. If you have any questions, I or Mr. Carl answer them.
Just clarify, you did say Tom got this and Tom was okay with all their revisions?
Yes, I didn't say anything, but yeah, I assumed with their response that he won.
So, this is piggybacking on an earlier?
His previous contract.
Right, I'm not?
I haven't got any of those ones.
But we only have one, which I don't know.
Correct?
But it's covering all the media services.
Yeah, I was told we could do it all, all at once.
You can, you hear all your proposals and consider it, you know.
So, are we just talking about the?
No, we have more, do you want?
We can give you all of them.
All at once, you want all at once?
Just guess what I would suggest, since I have a vague feeling that they'll overlap, if I remember right, or something, we're in an conversation.
So, is that okay?
Yeah.
Sorry, I highlighted it for you so that you can better understand the changes.
Now, who was standing for?
That was Jennifer Thompson, that was here at one time.
Okay.
Prior to? So, kind of the same thing with these other two. The highlighted parts, I piggybacked off Bernard's contract previously to kind of, without starting from scratch, so you've got a lot of your basic information on the back page. The highlighted sections would be the ones that really pertain to the services that Mr. Hires, Mr. Carr, Randy, and myself are going to talk about. Mr. Scott received one, and Jennifer, what is it? Ms. Thompson.
Okay, so, I was going to say, this, I think, piggybacks on a previous agenda item that we had, when we talked about we were going to go back and visit with the three and actually work out the contract. And so, I think at that time, Mayor Nichols tasked me with kind of looking into this, and so, to go back to what we had originally talked about, what I originally talked about that night, is we received the contracts, or the proposals, that you're, we're really looking at apples to oranges, and as far as what the proposals were versus what apples to oranges and what was in the proposals, and what the different organizations can offer as far as videography goes. And I think that's what we went back to looking at, one, that is a continuation with Bernard Media to continue doing the City Council Meetings, and then potentially even adding some of the other city meetings in as we go. All of that is in, you know, knowing that, you know, the city's trying to move, has talked for years about putting city cameras in here and whatnot, but I think that that is a contract that we have, it's not something that is broken, and so I don't think it's anything that needs to be fixed at this point. And so, my recommendation would be to move forward with Bernard Media to continue that service. And I think there's a few things that were, that are different from last year's contract.
Do you read over this?
Which are, I think the biggest highlight is, I think, bringing it into the city, the city has control, will now have control of the content through a city-created page, and so it will scroll to the city, and it will be a City of Talagul.
YouTube.
YouTube, that will hold the council minutes. And I think Mr. Bernard has agreed to that, or talked about that, it's in the contract.
Actually suggested it.
Yes, it was in your original proposal. So, the other portion, so that would be for the council meetings. The other portion, I think, that in, when we got the proposals, I think that turned, flipped a light switch with me, is looking at videography and looking at utilizing some of the resources the city has, i.e. the TV station, or the TV channel, to do some more proactive pieces from a city PR standpoint. And working with Jamie to come up with a public relations plan, and then working with a contractor to kind of work through that plan and produce those pieces. And so, after looking at the three proposals, Scott Media is the one that jumped out and had the most, I think, innovative proposals and the most creativity as far as, you know, being able to utilize some videography to do some pieces for the, some PR-related pieces, you know, what's going on with the city, what's going on with the City Council, the mayor, happening in City Hall, that, those type of pieces. And so, I think that that would be a great thing for us to utilize. And so, like I said, that night, I think that it is, you're, we're looking at two proposals to do two very different things, but I think to do two very useful things for the city and moving forward. So, if you look at Tom, if you look at Bernard Media, you know, it covers the City Council Meetings and some potential other meetings. If you look at Scott Media, it covers producing the videos, 10 videos under the agreement recommendations of the public relations specialist and the city administrator, producing those from getting the video to the final edited content. We then can put them on the TV station, we can put them on the website, things like that, but it allows us to have a more proactive voice in talking about some of the great things that the city is doing.
Can I add something?
Sure.
Whenever I was getting these together, Standing Cloud Media hadn't gotten back to me on the cost or what they were capable of providing, because this is, what's in here is what we had sat down and decided would be best suited for the city. She didn't contact me until after, it was too late, I'd already emailed them to you, but just so you know, she did, she did tell me that she couldn't commit to 10. She rebutted with four videos, three to five-minute-long videos, and her cost was $1,000. So.
Now, that, that cost isn't specified in either the contracts, is that for the life of the contract, or was it $1,000 for the entire year, is it $1,000 a month?
You're trying to save cloud?
Well, for, for each of them, there's?
His says $2,000.
I understand, but there's no, you know, when do we pay him that?
Well, I left?
Was it 365 days of service?
I left the dates blank to allow you guys the opportunity to decide when you would want us to start.
Well, I guess what the question is, is how often do we pay the $1,000 or the $2,000, depending on?
Oh, sorry, monthly.
Okay.
I apologize. Same for her, if you wanted to write that in, it's $1,000, but it's four videos, and that's monthly as well. And I can edit that if you want.
I guess my only objection to her contract is, again, it goes back to what, I said that night, because we weren't talking about her that night, I didn't know she was here, but it goes back to, you know, when we originally put out a request for proposals, we got three proposals back, and we got three proposals back that kind of highlighted what they were, what they wanted to do, if you will. And so, we got those proposals, and then we took some of the proposals that we, one, some of the things we liked out of one, and then kind of went to two others, and rather than, you know, putting in a proposal, we then kind of put in an auction of who can do this for, you know, this amount of money. And so, in my head, we, a couple of weeks ago, two meetings, whenever, we received our proposals, and then we picked the two proposals that we liked, and now, tonight, it's to move forward with those two proposals. And so, the recommendation would be to move forward with Bernard Media to do the filming of the City Council, and to move forward with Scott Media to do the, to work with the PR Director to put together the content.
I'm going to ask that we vote on those separately, as far as, you know, one for the council, one for the?
You could bifurcate it.
Videography services.
I would like to reiterate Josh's sentiment that I would ask that we vote on those two separate action items. I know you made your motion, but?
He just made a recommendation.
Okay.
If we can, I mean, there's only one item, so I don't know how we, I mean, technically, I'm under the impression that Bernard Media, we don't necessarily have to vote on. It's a professional contract, it's under $10,000, it's within the budget, this can be signed tonight. Could have been signed a month ago, we had to. I didn't even tell you I wouldn't have it yet done. I wasn't going to throw you out. You know, so I don't know that we have to vote on, I think it's a matter of the mayor's pen. The one that we have to vote on, I think it's the one that would be over $10,000.
And we talked about whether or not Bernard actually needed to come today, and since we had already done it within the past, we just figured, why not do something? Because we've done it before, so.
I mean, I also, if we want to vote on them, I'm fine with that. I'll, I'll take care of the Bernard contract, and you can make a motion as you will see fit, based on either Tom, our Standing Cloud, or Scott Media. If we can bifurcate, they can sell what you send?
Sure, I mean, you can take up multiple actions in one agenda item if you like. You can take up multiple actions in one agenda item if you like.
Yeah, that would make Tom feel better.
It's covered, which is a good idea.
And if you want to vote on it tonight, since I hadn't signed away, then you could do that to bifurcate it.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, just to clarify. So this is for 10 videos a month, so obviously that'd be 120 videos a year. Do we think that 120, that sounds kind of excessive to me?
Um--
I mean, that seemed, I mean, I know we do great things for the city, but 120 seems--
That's, to you guys, if you think it's too many, that's fine. I didn't necessarily put everything in the contract. Met with Mr. Scott as well as Ms. Thompson-Sixt to discuss some of the ideas that we had for the city. If you want some of those, I could kind of give those to you now, just to kind of help you flush that out. Sit down with the mayor, whoever he or she may be. And then sit down with counselors, talk about your district, your ward, I'm sorry, I used to share the nation. Talk about your ward, things that you have going on in your ward. Maybe you've had people talk about certain issues or concerns and you want to shed light on those to let people know what's going on or whatever. We talked about doing one story per week to go along with a press release, maybe that would coincide with something I'd already written, to help give a video component to that. We talked about doing, having a couple out there that are available for whatever they would like to do, maybe pitch some ideas back and forth. That isn't to say that they couldn't choose what they wanted to do or I wouldn't tell them, hey, I'd like to see something like this. So. And we also talked about doing an employee of the month as one of those videos, maybe suggested by the city administrator in cooperation with the department head. Those are just a few ideas. Obviously, the sky's the limit. We can make it as big, first grade. But it's something that's not offered now and I think it would be really beneficial to the city and its residents. A lot of people have a hard time focusing on reading everything and videos catch their eye.
I mean, quite frankly, I, just to answer your question very directly, I don't think 120 videos is--
Is a lot.
Is a lot. I mean, I think in a town this size, with as much as we have going on, with as much, you know, capital improvements that we have going on, with as much activities that we have going on, I mean, I think that 10 videos, I mean, I'll get, 10 videos could be a PR plan and you could be wanting to do 11, 12, you know, the sky's the limit. I mean, ultimately, I think that it would be good to bring, to look at expanding and bringing that person on staff. I don't think we're at that point now and I don't think we're, you know, I think there's some good aspects of doing it on contract, you know, because then you don't have to buy the equipment, you don't have to do some of those things. So it saves us money in that aspect.
Keep in mind--
Get one of your videos done, simple.
I can only reach so many with written. So, the video component will be really beneficial. And that also goes to say that as much information we put out, there's double, triple misinformation. So, maybe that video would help in that aspect as well. YouTube, online, Facebook, news stations. A lot of times we get news stations that come down and cover our mishaps or something that's going on that's got a lot of people talking. For example, maybe we could do some of the really great things that are going on in Talalpa and send that video, are we compiled, already ready? And they don't have to send a reporter down to cover it.
Just, me personally, my thought is I would rather take the $24,000 and use that to work on some of the, the issues that Mr. Green talked about earlier, our internal control issues and compliance issues. That's me personally. I would rather take that money, although I can understand why you're making the request that you are Counselor Hires, but I personally would rather take those same $24,000 and invest it in another area, which I see as more, more critical to our being fully compliant. And then I think further down the road, we could do more of the aesthetic fluff stuff, whereas now we still have some core issues that we need to improve on.
And I can totally respect that. I, I don't agree with it, but I--
Right.
You know, and not to say that I don't think that everything you just said is absolutely needed, I think that it absolutely is, but I think this city, as large as Talalpa is, we can walk and shoot down at the same time. And that's kind of how I view it, is, you know, we can do more than one thing and this is a piece that I think is vital to, you know, transparency and getting our story out and letting people, letting our residents know some of the great things that we're, we're doing, you know, and maybe one of the videos can be the, the great strides we're making in the financial resources department.
Right.
By the money that we're going to allocate to, you know, get the, to, you know, address some of the things that are in the audit later, so. But I think that there's a need for both of these services and I think there's a need, you know, so we can move forward and have it done.
Ms. Bernard, do you have a--
Yeah, and I should have asked this earlier, but it came back around, so I'm going to ask. City Treasurer, is that not, is he not a CPA?
That's not really pertinent.
Well, but it is, because we're talking about the $24,000 that could be spent on training, but, and don't we have a city treasurer? And I thought Lanning was a CPA.
Okay. I see where you're making the connection.
Right.
You know, I would argue--
So I should have asked that at that time, but then it brought itself back up again and I thought, I thought we had a CPA. So, really all I have to say, I think the videos are a great idea as well.
Mr. Bernard?
When you're discussing four videos or 10 videos, I've done a lot of research on SEO, search engine optimization and--
Did you? Okay.
Yeah. My, my personal preference, and Mr. Scott can attest to this, I said, we really aren't going to be able to keep people's attention past really two minutes. So, I just put a two to five, just, but my personal preference, I would say two.
My son can watch some kid unwrap a--
Toy.
Some toy for 10 minutes and be absolutely happy with it. Like, you have that toy, go play with it. Don't watch somebody else unwrap it.
So anyway, if you have any questions?
Any questions of Ms. Murphy? Mr. Scott? Still like saying that.
Okay.
Well, effective dates on these?
Mr. Bernard's, I put July 1st. We were June 30th. I went back to when he should have essentially had a contract--
Did I see that, the other two that don't have them?
Well, again, I wanted you guys to have the option. I don't know when he wanted it to start. I know she said, she didn't actually give me a start date. Mr. Scott said tomorrow. So it is up to you guys, I just wanted to give you the option.
August 7th to June 30th.
Yeah, I would think it is.
So can we make, so--
No, I was thinking this way, so.
If we're going to bifurcate, where did they work tonight? How does that work? Because if I make a motion and we vote on it, then we typically go to the next thing.
We typically do, but in this case, we have two considerations tonight.
Correct. You're proposing two considerations.
Then I would make, my first motion would be to accept the agreement for services for the City of Talalpa and Bernard Media, the contract we have.
That's presented, okay.
Second.
Motion, second for acceptance of the contract. For the, any final questions or comments on that consideration?
Are you sure you want to say, Tom? Last chance. Not joking, but there's not pause.
I like the incentive for bringing me here.
Never mind.
Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And we are still on then item 18, which is the consideration of videography services. We wait a second motion.
My next motion would be to accept the agreement for services for the City of Talalpa and Scott Media, effective today, to extend to June 30th, 2019.
A motion from Counselor Hires, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Combs?
Counselors, if I may, I'd at least want you to reference monthly after the 2,000 as documents you have to bag on paper.
Okay. And would you like to--
Yes.
Have in your motion to include the word monthly?
Say, yeah, compensation would be monthly.
We can make that change if the second is--
Second.
Okay, great. Great, you have Counselor Combs. Any other questions or comments on the second item? Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Long?
No.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
No.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy, and thank you, Mr. Bernard and Mr. Scott. Item 19, mid-month meeting, Counselors, which your pleasure, is the 20th, I guess it would be future today. Is that acceptable to everyone? A standard issue thing? No, Counselor Hires, okay?
I am available.
Everybody else is available? Let's tentatively call it for the 20th and we will, you know, if we'd have a minimal amount of business or something, we, you know, might end up not holding it for now. Let's call it. We've got, I think we, actually, we'll probably, we have, have a meeting, so we'll try to hold it on the 20th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carries.